We'll call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of Monday, October 3rd. My watch says October 2nd, okay, October 3rd, all right. We'll note that all commissioners are present. And the first item of business is the order of business. Now, I have one change that I'm just going to call 4A1. It'll be the first item that we take on the non timetable agenda, and that's regarding a proclamation to celebrate diversity. Are there any other changes to the order of business? Not in the chair to entertain a motion with the change mentioned to approve the order of business?
I'll make that motion.
Chair second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Next item then is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Would there be a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. We'll now go to the non timetable agenda, and the first item we have there, again, is this proclamation regarding diversity and to make some opening comments. We have Deb Dalzell.
Thank you, commissioners. As Mayor Johnson indicated, my name is Debbie DeZell. I am the coordinator of the Diversity Days program here in the city of Dickinson. It's a program that was started 20 years ago. This is our 20th annual program. It is a program designed to educate students about what it would be like to be an individual with a disability on a daily basis. Some of us may have had a disability that took us for maybe a few weeks, or a month, or a year, but some live on a daily basis. In fact, in America alone, there are over 54.4 million Americans with disabilities, which equates to about 1 in 5. And this month of October is National Disability Employment Awareness Month, so that is the reason that we host this program in October. It is sponsored by the Mayor's Committee on the Employment of Persons with Disabilities, and we do receive funding from the Optimist Club as well as the city of Dickinson. To date, we have had over 7,000 students that have participated in the program. We target 4th, 5th, and 6th graders at the elementary schools in Dickinson, and some from the surrounding community as well. And this year, we will be at Hart River Elementary and Berg Elementary. So it's a rather large year for us, since we will have all of the 6th graders in the district. There are seven stations that we simulate disabilities at. We have volunteers who work at the stations to help the students become aware of what it would be like. And most of those volunteers do come from Dickinson State University, as well as there are over eight professional agencies in the community that participate as well. And I would just welcome the signature on the proclamation that would allow us to promote and continue to have Diversity Days.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for Deb? All right. Well, I'll read the proclamation. It says, "Celebrate diversity. Whereas the Dickinson Mayor's Committee on the Employment of Persons with Disabilities has organized a celebration of diversity and recognition that persons with disabilities are an important part of the community of Dickinson. And whereas the committee has organized Diversity Day activities which shall take place the week of October 16 through October 22, 2011, in conjunction with the Dickinson Public Systems to create an awareness of and appreciation for persons with differences. And whereas the committee composed of volunteers from many organizations from Dickinson who give many hours to awareness of diversity, has established the month of October as their celebration of diversity. And now therefore, as the Dickinson City Commission President, I, Dennis W. Johnson, hereby proclaim the week of October 16 through October 22, 2011, as Diversity Days Week, and the month of October as Celebration of Diversity Month in the city of Dickinson, North Dakota." Unless we have any objections here, I'll sign this. Okay, we'll go to item A, which is the 2012 Annual Appropriations Ordinance, and we'll ask Mrs. Johnson to present the ordinance, and then after her presentation, we'll ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment.
Good evening, Mr. President, commissioners. I'll highlight a few of the items from our 2012 budget, along with a few changes that we've had since first reading. Some of the highlights for our revenues include property tax revenue. There's an increase of $154,000 for new construction coming on the tax roll, but no increase for existing properties. We also have a transfer of $1.5 million from our new Oil Impact Fund into the General Fund for such things as City Hall remodel and additional staff. In our sales tax funds, we're budgeting a 12% increase in the 1% sales tax, the 1/2% sales tax, and the hospitality tax, and a 20% increase in our hospitality tax. In our expenses, we're showing a 3% cost of living adjustment to the pay scale, and we have moved the anniversary step for our hourly employees to January 1st. We also have a transfer of $1 million from our 1/2% sales tax fund to the construction of the Public Works Building, and $1 million to the Development Impact Fee Program in our 2012 budget. And our transfers from our new Oil Impact Fund include the $1.5 million to the General Fund, which is money that we receive from our mining-related employment, and we are transferring $1 million to the wastewater treat -- excuse me, $5 million to the wastewater treatment plant from the Oil Hub Cities grant. The changes that we've had from first reading to second include our other post-employment benefits. We had this recalculated by our actuary, and it reduced our contribution from $281,000 to $127,000. This item affected several funds, any fund that had employees, basically. In our 1% sales tax fund, we've set the Stark Development Budget to $625,000 for 2012, eliminating the percentage calculation. We've also moved the elder care taxi subsidy from the General Fund to the 20% share of the 1% sales tax fund, and we've increased it from $67,500 to $85,000. This change reduced our use of cash in the General Fund to $411,000. And then in the museum, we have added $32,500 for collections and exhibit management supplies. This addition will be funded through the hospitality tax. Those are some of the highlights. Are there any questions?
Any comments or questions?
I have one. Use of cash, $411,000. When you consider the net effect of the, what really is a one-time use of the $500,000 for a public works building, then really it's a $90,000 or $89,000.
Positive.
Positive.
Correct. We have a balanced budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong. The use of funds is for the remodel of the...
We're actually transferring $500,000 out of the General Fund towards the...
Is it the remodel of the...
No, that would be towards the Public Works Building.
Towards the Public Works Building.
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Jackson's correct then. Other comments? I took the liberty of suggesting the monies for the museum go back in the budget after the special meeting we held over there. I hope the rest of you concur with that. And I had a conversation with the elder care manager some time ago, and she was pretty sure that she was going to get $100,000 from the city, and we had her in for $67,500. And I took the liberty of suggesting we increase that to $85,000 to kind of meet her closer to halfway there. So those you hadn't really had a chance to discuss, I want to make you aware of that. Are there any objections to those changes?
Mr. President, I agree with both of them, but the museum center, I think now's the time that we do have to invest in it, after the tour and so on. I think it's now or never. Either that place makes it, with the help that we're giving it now for improving the buildings and the care that they need, and with the museum director right now, I think this is our best chance of getting the ball rolling on that and getting what we would consider a first-class museum for southwest North Dakota.
Thank you, Commissioner Steiner. Anybody else? There is one other change I should note. When I had a chance to meet with Stark County Development, we talked in terms of roughly $600,000 to $625,000 being their annual contribution from the city for 2012. When they were here at the meeting, and it's reflected in the minutes, we kind of talked about $600,000, and they seemed to be fine with that. Again, I just asked that Mrs. Johnson insert $625 in there. I think the sales tax can support that, plus we're able to do some additional things for elder care, so I was comfortable with the $625. So that is too a little different than what we talked about two weeks ago, and I hope that meets, you know, with your approval also. Well, if there's no other comments at this time, I'm going to ask if there's anyone from the public that wishes to comment on the 2012 Annual Appropriations Ordinance. If so, you can step to the podium now, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. There's no one from the public. Are there any more comments by commissioners? Would there be a motion regarding a second reading and final approval of this ordinance?
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. The next item is also Mrs. Johnson's, and that is the 2012 Fee Schedule, and I think she handed out a new one to us.
Correct. You should have a revised copy. Mr. President, commissioners, in the 2012 Fee Schedule, the new fees that we're proposing are highlighted in green on your enclosure, and they include a crew camp housing fee of $400 per unit, temporary use permits and zoning letters in our engineering department, plumbers and heating and cooling permits, also in our engineering department, and a new commercial roll-off service in our solid waste department. Our rate increases, which are highlighted in yellow, include board of adjustment variance is increasing from $50 to $100. Our rezone petition is increasing from $250 to $350. Our special use permit is going from $150 to $200. We have added the fireworks stand permits that we began in 2011 to this resolution. Our lot mowing has increased from $200 to $250, and we've increased our sewer connection fee for new construction to 50% of our water connection fees. For our utility rates, we've increased our water consumption from $4.17 per thousand gallons to $4.34. Our wastewater consumption does not have an increase, which is a change from the document that you had in your binder, but our wastewater base rate has increased to $5 for residential and $10 for commercial. And our residential refuse has increased from $11.33 per month to $11.67 per month. Our commercial refuse scale was reformulated, which translates to varying increases from 3% to 13%. Those are the changes. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Any comments, questions?
President, Mrs. Johnson, just for those who are listening, hearing about fee increases, it appears to me that virtually all the fee increases are related to growth, related to construction activities, inspection activities, so that we can put that financial burden more on those activities rather than property tax or some other revenue source. Am I right in what I'm seeing here?
That is correct. Our largest increase is for our wastewater department, and that's in anticipation of the wastewater treatment plant. That would be correct.
Okay. Well, I sure think that's appropriate in these times, as we're going through what we are. Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Mr. Coling, what resolution number is this?
Mr. President, this would be Resolution 57-2011.
Okay. Would there be a motion regarding this resolution?
I'll move. We approve Resolution 57-2011 related to the fee schedule.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go to item C, the North Dakota Department of Emergency Services. This has to do with hazardous materials.
Mr. President, this would be Mr. Seavox.
Mr. Seavox? Okay. I thought so, but he didn't seem to be volunteering to come up.
President Johnson, commissioners, just giving Mr. Kessel and Mr. Coling every opportunity to take center stage if they wanted to.
Right.
And that not being successful. You've heard me speak many times before about our partnership with the state of North Dakota and partnering with the state of North Dakota in a regional response concept concerning hazardous materials response. And at previous meetings, the commission has said, yes, we want to be a part of that, and the city of Dickinson should be one of the eight communities involved. This formalizes all of the work that's been done over the years concerning that. As stated in the memo, equipment has been purchased through DES grant funds that we have in place. Department members have been trained to an operational level of response, and across the state, the eight communities are now ready to formalize the response agreement, and that's what's before you now. Response agreement outlines the parameters for each individual community and what's expected of them, whether that's a technical-level response or an operations-level response, and it also contains the wording and reimbursement, reimbursement for career individuals, reimbursement for volunteer firefighters that would actually be called to respond. And this is the final document. Mr. Coling has had a chance to review the draft document and is aware of changes that were made to this one, and as all communities were asked to do. So now they're waiting for our signatures.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Seavox. Any comments or questions regarding this item? Chief Seavox is recommending a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement. Is there such a motion?
I would make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Brings us to item D, texting while driving ordinance. Mr. Coling?
Yes, Mr. President, commissioners, the proposed ordinance in front of you incorporates into city code new legislation that was passed in the 2011 state legislature. The ordinance provides that all persons, regardless of age, are prohibited from texting while driving. The ordinance further provides that persons between the ages of 16 and 18 are prohibited from any use of a mobile communication device or cellphone while driving. We did do some additional research on this and have concluded that existing city code provides sufficient enforcement authority for those under the age of 16. Specifically, if you are under the age of 16, there's already state law in place stating that you cannot use a mobile communication device while driving with a learner's permit or restricted license. So no city code change is required for that at this time. We did make one change to the ordinance from first reading, and that has to do with the effective date of the ordinance pursuant to state law. The provision regarding minors is effective January 1 of 2012, so we would make our ordinance, city ordinance, effective the same date. The remaining provision of the ordinance regarding texting while driving is effective immediately. It was effective at the state level August 1, and would be effective for city code purposes upon final passage.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Any comments or questions here? Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment regarding this proposed ordinance? If so, you can step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. There's no one from the public. Chair to entertain a motion regarding ordinance 1425.
Move to approve. Mr. President?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Move to item E. This is a first reading of an ordinance regarding the hospitality and lodging tax ordinances. Mr. Coling or Mr. Kessel, or either one of you introduce this item?
Mr. President, commissioners, I can take that. The proposed ordinance in front of you makes some changes to the city's allocation regarding the hospitality tax and occupancy tax. The direct operating subsidy to the CVB would be eliminated, and the funding for the CVB would be put at the discretion of this commission, which you would do on an annual basis. The other provision in this agreement affects the appointment of the Visitors Committee. The Visitors Committee, if you approve this ordinance, would be appointed by the City Commission, consistent with other boards and commissions over which the city has point of authority. Happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Any comments or questions by city commissioners?
Just want to put the proper context in this, that we're doing this ordinance, but we will still need to craft an agreement, a contract.
That's correct.
In the future.
I'd envision a multi-year contract with the CVB to provide the visitor promotion services.
So I would see this as kind of an enabling ordinance, and I understand we have numbers in our budget right now that affect this, but the detail of the contract is still to come.
That's correct. Other comments or questions? Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding this proposed ordinance? If so, just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. No one from the public? Would there be a motion regarding this proposed ordinance?
What is the ordinance number?
This would be ordinance 1426. 1426.
I'll move for the first reading of ordinance 1426.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Kessel, can we get through some of your report before we go to the timetable?
We certainly can try, President Johnson. The first item that I have for you is a police chief interview schedule. We did hand out a revised schedule from that which exists in your council packets. I'd like to invite the public specifically to a meet and greet, or Meet the Candidates' Open House tomorrow evening at 5:00. It'll be at the Badlands Activity Center. We'll start the day at 1:00, and a community tour will be provided to both our candidates and their wives. Well, then, the candidates will meet with the press editorial board, and then the police department staff will have the opportunity to ask questions of our candidates and hear those responses. We then go to the meet and greet I mentioned earlier at the Badlands Activity Center at 5:00 PM, and then President Johnson and I will have a supper interview with candidate Drack in that evening. The next morning, we start with a breakfast interview with Mr. Dossinger, and then at 10:00, there'll also be a stakeholders' question-and-answer session, and that will involve all of the agencies that work with our police department very closely, such as Highway Patrol, Sheriff's Office, emergency management, and so on and so forth. So we feel like we've put our candidates through a rather rigorous process. We feel that the cream will definitely rise to the top, and that we hope to make a decision on a new police chief shortly after this process is complete and a recommendation before this body. Any questions about that schedule? Again, Meet the Candidates' Open House tomorrow evening, 5:00, Badlands Activity Center. The public is invited, and we'll have refreshments. The next item is a discussion of a regional planner. This discussion item has been raised due to the very rapid pace of growth, not only in Dickinson, but in the surrounding county and counties beyond in southwest North Dakota. We were lucky enough to have the resources available to the city to hire a planner, Mr. Corton, which has proven to be a very good idea, in my opinion. The Stark County has approached the city of Dickinson about hiring a planner as well. They'd like to contract for services. They'd like to contract for services at a level that would make it difficult for Mr. Corton to provide those services to the county without additional help. So if we wanted to engage the county in a contract, we would need to hire that staff in order to do so. At the same time, I spoke to Rod Landblum from Roosevelt Custer Regional Planning, and he has submitted a grant that would, amongst other things, calls for what he titles a circuit rider. A circuit rider would be a planner that would be made available to the surrounding cities and counties in southwest North Dakota. There is a provision in there that discusses technical assistance. Certainly, if we decide to hire an individual to provide services to Stark County, we could in addition decide to provide technical services to the surrounding southwest North Dakota with this same individual. If the grant is funded, and you won't hear about that for between four and eight weeks, that would be an option for us. I would also like to suggest that Mr. Corton, and he can certainly speak for himself, has been very, very busy, based on all of the growth that's going on in our community. It wouldn't, it would certainly be beneficial to have the services of a part-time planner simply within the city staff to engage all of the activities that we are brought before us on a regular basis. I don't know, Mr. Corton, if you'd like to make a comment related to that at all?
Mr. President, commission, I would concur with what Mr. Kessel had mentioned. As this position evolves, as there's more and more need, as the development happens, it seems like my duties are becoming broader and broader, and having an additional, if nothing else, a part-time staff member would be very beneficial to implement additional code changes that I don't, or administration work that I just don't have the time to do. I think that we're aware of that. I think that we're aware of that a lot of our zoning code is not directly enforced just due to, due to other issues that are, that have a higher priority, due to safety, health and safety issues, and that could be used for that position as well. I could easily fill that position with plenty of work based upon where you see this position evolving. I have my ideas of where this position can go and what would be beneficial, but I think as a commission, I could easily support an additional half, half-person to help out with the planning duties, to, to make our streamline our permitting process better for building inspections, I mean, building reviews on the planning side of that, and also for the code enforcement side. So. I know, if you have any specific questions that you might have.
We obviously have been talking a great, thank you, Planner Corton, talking a great deal about our comprehensive plan. We're excited about that process. We'll be talking much more about that in the months to come, and this is also a task that has fallen on the shoulders of Mr. Corton as well. So we're presenting the ideas and thoughts to you today on a regional planner so that you can see that there's multiple avenues if this is a position that is chosen to pursue. If the grant works out with Roosevelt Custer, I believe that all those costs would then be paid for. We would experience no expenses related to this position. If we choose not to participate in that grant, then there would be some expenses related to this position. We can come back and suggest and show you what those may be. We're not asking, obviously, for a decision tonight, and this is not in our 2012 budget. So this would be something that we would have to amend that budget for if we choose to move forward. So knowing we're close to five, I guess I'd like to ask if there's questions about that initially.
Did, did you say that the Stark County is willing to contribute towards the cost of this planner, and then the planner would work in the county as well as the city?
President Johnson, that's accurate. The Stark County, I've had a couple of discussions with county commissioners, and they are willing to enter into a contract with the city of Dickinson to provide planner services to, to them. We currently, of course, have commissioners. Commissioner Jackson serves on that, that body, and they would like, they've seen, I think, the enhancements that a planner has provided us as a city, and they'd like to take advantage of those as well.
Well, I think anything we can do to work closer with the county in terms of planning the development, not only within the city of Dickinson and our ETZ, but outside that, I think that's, that's beneficial. We can point to other examples in the state, perhaps, where the city and county were kind of late in, in working together, and, you know, that can cause some problems. So I, personally, I think we should, we should try to go forward with this, and whichever way the funding turns out, if the Roosevelt Custer planning grant would, would come into play, that would be great. If it doesn't, personally, I think we should, we should still go ahead. But what do the rest of you think?
Mr. President? There's one other thing I think we need to be aware of. You know, I'm certainly open to the planning grant that apparently could happen, but if this happens, and I hope it does happen, I think it'd be a really good thing for our greater community. If, if we hire a person who is one-half time dedicated to the county, Mr. Corton is going to have to give supervision, direction, all of that to that person. That's going to take a percentage of his time. I don't know what the number is. So I'm feeling that our own city is going to need the other half time, this person. If we give the county half, I think that we need the other half. I'm, I'm certainly open to hearing about the other arrangement, but that's the way I'm leaning right now.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Other comments? Okay, well, I think we'll leave your report for now, Mr. Kessel, and we'll go to the timetable agenda. We have a 5:00 item, and that's to hear the initial presentation on the comprehensive transportation plan by Mr. Kugus from KLJ, so welcome.
Thank you, President Johnson. Just to give you a brief update, we did have an initial kickoff meeting with Planner Corton and Engineer Thorne a couple of weeks ago, and as you can see, we have the Dickinson Comprehensive and Transportation Plan. We've renamed this plan tentatively. I don't know if we have it officially yet, but it's going to be called Dickinson 2035 Roadmap to the Future. And that was after a lot of collaboration, we came up with that, that new name, hoping to garner a little more interest than Dickinson Comprehensive and Transportation Plan. The first thing that we had talked about at our kickoff meeting was the schedule. And initially, when, when we had interviewed for the project, we talked about a completion in June. As it's taken the summer to come to terms on a contract, what we proposed was essentially the same schedule on the, on the front end, but with completion in August. And what this allows us to do in the middle, as you can see, this is the initial schedule with the May completion or a June completion, and, and there's a gap there, number six, provides some time to take some of this initial public comment that we get and really use that public comment instead of trying to fit it in later on in the plan, to use that initial public comment for our draft technical memorandums and our draft plan. So as you can see, we'd still have where the red triangles are, we'd have some intermediate deliverables still before June of 2012, but the final plan would be complete in August of 2012. And that's, that's what we recommend for a revised schedule for the plan. Our first kickoff meeting will be on October 13th at the West River Community Center. It's going to be from 5:00 to 7:30 PM. This is on a Thursday. There has been a legal notice that was published in the paper last week, and this coming week, prior to Thursday, we're going to have a press release trying to gain more attention for this public input meeting. And the, the real key to this meeting is, is we want to get the, the public interested in this and really identify the issues that they, that the public sees right now. We do have a website that I don't believe it's up and running yet, but it will be very shortly. It'll have that same domain name, Dickinson 2035 Roadmap to the Future. So we hope to get as much public attention for this initial kickoff meeting with the public as we can. Like I said, it's, it's going to be kind of an informal thing. Walk in, if you can spend five minutes or a half an hour, we'll have booths set up, tables with charts. We hope to catch a lot of that walk-through traffic at the West River Community Center. The next meeting, and I need to make a correction to this, is going to be November 17th, again at the West River Community Center, and this is going to be an all-day affair. We're calling it our Visioning Public Workshop, and it will be open to the public, of course, but prior to that, earlier in the day, we want to meet with some groups that we're, we're working on assembling right now with city staff, and that's an advisory committee and a plan, a planning advisory committee and a stakeholders committee, and I'll explain those a little bit here. But again, we'll have a public input meeting towards the end of the day on the 17th of November. I guess the times haven't been finalized yet.
Excuse me. Seventeenth or thirteenth?
It's the 17th.
Okay.
Oops. So like I mentioned, we, we are in the final processes of, of coming up with a list of community stakeholders, and just in general, this stakeholder would be comprised of boards, committees, I believe the two high schools, and business leaders throughout the community. This is really going to help us avoid some pitfalls, bring, bring some attention to a, a point that we might be missing in our plan. And another important reason I think we need these community stakeholders is to take the information that we've, we've gained and disseminate it to the groups that they're involved in and the committees and boards that, that these stakeholders are on. We have been working with city staff to develop some protocols on communication and coordination. Our main point of contact will be through Planner Corton. We have some discussions on, on our media relationships as well. And then the planning advisory committee that I talked about earlier, this will be a, a group of industry leaders, major businesses, the airport, the hospital, that really need to, to guide this plan and tell us where it needs to go. So we're in the final stages of completing those lists of the stakeholders and the planning advisory committee. Just to give you a brief update of where we're at and what we've done so far on the project, like I said, we, we are developing that project website, should be up and running here this week. We're preparing a community survey that will be available on the project website, and it'll be available at all the public input meetings as well. We have been trying to collect some of the demographic data from the U.S. Census Bureau. A lot of that data and other data will be available at those community meetings. And then NDSU, while not under contract with us, is also working with the State Data Center on some of the population and employment projections. Our traffic modeling is underway right now. What we're trying to do is identify zones of traffic where we can look at future growth, and it's probably going to be towards quadrants of the city, northwest, northeast, and the like, so we can get the forecast modeling for our future traffic. And we're reviewing existing development codes and land use plans. Those are going to be some of the intermediate deliverables that we're going to want to hit on early in the project, so we're reviewing those right now. And then, again, we're just identifying some of the issues that need to be resolved. The focus being on the public, though. We want them to bring forward the issues that are important to them, instead of us trying to bring forward the issues that, that we think should be important to Dickinson. So with that, I would open it up to any questions you might have.
I want to be clear. Is that November 13th meeting really November 17th?
It is November 17th.
So it was wrong on the slide?
The slide is incorrect.
Okay. Okay, are there comments or questions for Mr. Kugus? Are you okay with the option two, the scheduled completion being August?
You know, yeah, we need the comprehensive plan now, but we won't get it now. We need it, more importantly, we need it right, so public input will be very, very important, so I think the later data is appropriate.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, okay. Thank you for being here. Mr. Kessel, we can probably squeeze in one more item here. You?
Thank you, President Johnson. The next item is the HR coordinator position. In the budget that you just approved, it does have an HR coordinator position within that. We initiated a process using former, retired police chief Rumel, who had been walking through our HR committee. He chaired that committee to go over compensable factors with the staff. Of course, Mr. Rumel is now retired, and that, that committee has been put on hold for lack of a chair. Rather than moving forward with this important project, we'd like to see the HR coordinator be the one to chair that committee and therefore bring that process to fruition. We'd rather not, if we can avoid it, wait and put this committee on hold for four months. We'd rather see the ability to hire that HR coordinator prior to 2012. What that means, of course, is that we'd have to allocate some funds from, in the 2011 budget to get that hiring process complete. Not asking again for a decision this evening, but certainly with the $500,000 that we received from the state on our, for oil production positions, we have the dollars available to us if we so choose. And what we'd really be talking about is about six weeks, you know, after you go through the hiring process, we're not really going to have a great deal of expense because it's going to take some time to go through that hiring process, but we're probably looking at about six weeks' expense of salary and benefits. So we'd like you to, to ponder that idea, that thought process, to make sure that the transition is, is quickly as we can from adopting that compensable factors process and, and moving to the HR coordinator being the chair of that committee.
You've, you've heard his report. Any feedback for Mr. Kessel? You know, I think, I think it would be okay to go ahead and start. There's a good chance that you may not even have someone ready to start here until January 1st, even starting now. You only have three months, so it, the process for adding a new position is, it's not the most speedy process we have in city government, so, you know, personally, I'm okay with it. The rest of you are?
Of him starting the hiring process now? Application process, interviewing, and then come to us if you get the live one?
Yeah. Yeah, we may have to amend the 2011 budget at, at the tail end there, but as Mr. Kessel stated, I think there's ample funds to do that, so.
I would point out that the, the paper has been full of HR-related positions lately, so I don't anticipate this to be an easy process to go through and get somebody, a live one, as Commissioner Altman's called it.
So I, I think the general consensus is that you can go ahead. I don't.
Thank you.
Okay, it's 5:15, and we have a 5:15 timetable agenda item, and, and Mr. Corton, I think generally you may introduce these?
Yes, Mr. President, fellow commissioners. Cooks Meadow Hills, second edition, the applicant has requested final plat approval of Cooks Meadow Hills, second edition. The plat is generally located west of 10th Avenue, 10th Avenue West and south of the future 31st Street West. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval of the plat, and the applicant is here, if you have any questions specifically of the plat as well.
Okay, any comments or questions? Mr. Coling, what is the resolution number?
Mr. President, this is resolution 58-2011.
58, okay. Is there a motion then regarding this item?
Mr. President?
Mr. Jackson?
These ordinances that were passed out tonight have revisions, or, or did we not have them?
Mr. President, I could address that if you'd like. Both, after going through the packet, I noticed that on the rezoning for both Diamond Acres, which will be preceding this one, also the one for Cooks Meadow Hills, the rezoning, there were a couple of lots that were missing, so it's a clarification of that. In essence, it's the same, it's just that there were some modifications to lots, there was a lot removed off one of them, and so this is the most accurate resolution for the rezoning of the two subsequent rezones.
Okay, but I think.
What we have here is a resolution regarding a final plat.
That is correct. So the final plat is first, and then the, the next two timetable items are for rezones.
And, and there were no changes to the resolution that's in your binder?
I apologize, I'm looking at the rezoning.
Right.
I'll move that we approve the plat.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There's no discussion, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So that motion passes. You can continue, Mr. Corton.
The next item is the rezoning for Cooks Meadow Hills, second edition. This is a rezoning petition from Ag to R1, R2, and R3. Attached in your packing materials is a color map depicting where the lots would be for each of the three rezonings. The rezoning accompanies the final plat that you have recommended approval. I will go to the, to the resolution. The resolution for, from Ag to R1 is for Block 1, lots 1 through 10, and Block 3, lots 1 through 5. The resolution for, from Ag to R2 is Block 2, lots 8 through 12, and Block 3, lots 1 through 6. And the last one is from Ag to R3 is for Block 2, lots 1 through 7. The Planning Commission and city staff recommend approval of the rezone petition.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corton. Mr. Coling, this ordinance number?
Mr. President, this is. Mr. President, this is Ordinance 1427, 1427.
1427, okay. Are there any comments or questions from commissioners here regarding Ordinance 1427?
Unless I'm reading this wrong, I think we've got a duplication, Lots 1 through 5 of Block 3. I think that should be stricken from the ordinance. In item 1, item 1 of the ordinance...
I would concur with that. Yes, the first one for Blocks, Block 3, Lots 1 through 5 should be stricken from it.
Under Point 1 or Point 2?
Point 1.
So that one should be stricken?
Correct.
Section 1, item 1.
That is correct. Block 1, Lots 1 through 10, from Ag to R1, that would be depicted in the yellow, and that is correct. The second, the second version of that needs to be removed or stricken from the resolution.
Okay, yeah, I think that's correct. Do you agree, Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding Ordinance 1427? This is the first reading. If there's someone from the public that'd like to comment, you may come to the podium at this time, state your name, we'll hear your comments. There's no one from the public. Would there be a motion regarding the first reading of 1427?
I'll make the motion for approval.
Second.
We have the second. Any other discussion? Okay, well, census is first reading. Just in case we don't have this correct, you get a chance to work on it here for two weeks, so. If there's no further discussion, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. We'll let you continue.
The next item is the rezoning for Diamond Acres. The applicant is requesting rezoning approval, or requesting approval for the rezone petition in front of you. Diamond Acres plat is generally described southerly of 21st Street East and westerly of 10th Avenue East. The applicant is requesting the following rezonings. Block, Blocks 10 and 11 from R2 to CC. Block 17, Lots 1 through 12 from R2 to R1, and Block 4, Lots 1 through 5 from R3 to R2. Enclosed in your packet materials is a copy of a color map depicting or illustrating the rezoning. The city and planning, the city's planning and zoning commission and city staff recommend approval, and I'm available if you have any questions, Mr. President.
Is this 1428 now?
Yes, 1428.
1428. Any comments or questions by commissioners? Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding this proposed ordinance? So, you can come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. No one from the public? Is there a motion regarding first reading? Anybody?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing down the vote, Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Cortan?
Tim, timetable-wise, I can go to Public Works and Planning if you prefer. Otherwise...
No, we'll wait till the... Can you do item A there? 6A?
Cooks, third edition?
Yes.
Okay. This annexation resolution is for the property north of the last Cooks annexation adopted earlier this year. The Cooks Meadow Hills, first and second editions were included within that. The property is situated westerly of 10th Avenue West and southerly of 32nd Street Southwest. This annexation is for an approximately 19-acre parcel, and is primarily dealing with the proposed Cooks Meadow Hills third edition, which is proceeding to planning commission next month. City staff recommends approval of this resolution and starting the adoption process. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Cortan. And Mr. Colley, it's Resolution Number?
It's Resolution 59-2011.
Okay, 59. You've heard Mr. Cortan's presentation. Any comments or questions here? Would there be a motion regarding the resolution?
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
I approve the Resolution Number 59-2011.
We have the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. Further discussion? No discussion, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Cortan. It's 5:35. We do have a 5:35 timetable agenda item, and that's to hear from Southwest Water, and representing Southwest Water is Mary Massey. So, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioners, pleasure to be here with you today. I have some... Excuse me, I have some hands up, so I'll have to... Yeah, I think everyone is covered. Southwest Water Authority is in the business of providing water throughout our region. We serve the 12 counties in southwest North Dakota. When oil impact started, I'd say, close to about two years ago, we started meeting with the oil industry. Since that time, we have been meeting... The State Water Commission built one water depot, and it is located south of Dodge, North Dakota. We are feeling the impacts in this region, and so we've been working, and I've been meeting with the city of Dickinson, I've been meeting with their state legislators, I've been meeting with the governor, State Water Commission, state engineer, on how we can do this and move forward. It would behoove all of us to work cooperatively to build a water depot. State Water Commission is not willing to use state tax dollars to do this. Southwest Water Authority feels it's imperative that we have one in the region. We feel it's imperative to work with the city of Dickinson and to do, to accomplish a few things. What we hope to accomplish, number one, is get the truck traffic out of town, to be able to meet the needs of the oil industry, to work together to meet that need, to build a water depot where we can use raw water instead of treated water, to hopefully be able to use wastewater instead of treated water, or whatever, and that it would be a good reuse of those products. The revenue generated from our proposal would be used to, we would do a cost sharing on the site. We'd be responsible for getting the water lines to the proposed site, each entity. We would share 50/50 in costs. We would do a revenue and cost sharing on the water depot itself. We'll work out percentages. It was floated at 2/7ths and 5/7ths based on original costs. The city of Dickinson needs a new wastewater facility, originally thought to cost around 20 million. Southwest Water Authority will need a new treatment plant someday in Dickinson. The city still owns that, that's still your facility, and we're estimating that cost, our early estimates are about 50 million. That would bring it from a 12-million gallon-a-day facility up to 18-million gallons per day. And since we've started those discussions, and I've met with your staff numerous times, they're smiling and nodding, so they aren't sick of me yet. So I'd like to tell you a little more in detail where we're looking at and why we've chosen sites we've chosen. This front map, if you look out over on the east corner, there's a star, and that's right off the east exit of Dickinson. It's along Old Highway 10. It is zoned ag. We have permission from the city for a water depot facility. We have a raw water line just north on Old Highway 10. We've got a 30-inch raw water line with a air vac that we could access water from and bring down to that point. They would have access to interstate, so they could travel east or west. They would have access going north of town, just to the east, that first road going north. They can take that north three miles or four miles and come out north on Highway 22. South access may be an issue. If it does not behoove the city to bring their wastewater to this location, down in the south corner of your maps are the lagoons. You've got cell 1, 2, 3, and 4, and below the fourth lagoon is a red star, and that's a proposed site for your wastewater, your mechanical wastewater facility. If it, oil industry continues to grow to the south, it might be more beneficial to build one on the south side of town. That could be done with the wastewater. Proposed location would probably be west of that, along that road, which would keep the truck traffic out of town and give them easy access to Highway 22 South of Dickinson. So I just, are there any questions so far?
Well, I have one. On the cost, you said we would share 50/50, but on the revenue, like 2/7ths, and if we share on the revenue in 2/7ths or some other number, wouldn't we share on the costs in a similar percentage?
Well, that's something we could look at, yes.
Okay.
Okay. We're pretty flexible at this point. I can tell you, I've been talking with my board of directors about this, why, for almost two years. We discuss it at every meeting, and we did have, we had a board meeting today in center of North Dakota, and I would say our board was very supportive of this concept, that it would be very beneficial if we could work together to be able to meet the industry needs, keep this economic engine, as we call it, going and viable, to get the trucks out of town, and to have an additional source of revenue for both entities, for both the city of Dickinson and Southwest Water Authority. The second map shows the proposed route and kind of a layout for the water depot. It shows Highway 10 East on the north. The red stop sign, it's a six sides, not eight, is an existing air vac on the raw water line. We would access raw water at that point. We'd bore under Highway 10, come south of the highway into the county right-of-way, and follow the property line down south. Our proposal is, we do have a purchase agreement in place with the landowner to purchase six acres of property and an additional right-of-way, which is close to 8/10ths of an acre. Bring it in, we'll have to do dirt work, it's not level, so the dirt work, and then to build in the road and the other facilities. It shows the pipeline route over to a round circle, which would be a tank, and that would be in excess of 200,000 gallons, probably 240,000 or 280,000 gallons. We could fill that when the trucks aren't filling. We could use that for storage. The little tanks that you... (beep). Ooh, is that me? Okay. The little tanks that you see at the sites, the fill sites for water depots are generally 500 barrels, and if they're not used in the wintertime, they'll freeze like an ice cube. You'd have to heat them, which they do, they insulate them and heat them. We're in the business of water, so we tend to use a larger tank. The trucks would come south, they would loop around, and then head to the north. The reason for that is elevation, so that they could come in with an empty truck going uphill, and they would go out at a straight elevation or a slight downhill slant instead of having to climb back uphill. At this route, at the location on Highway 10, they have good view access, both from the east and the west. It's on the west side of a hill. I think it would work well. Like I said, there'd be quite a bit of dirt work done to begin with. We'd like to get it up and running always sooner rather than later, but we're still, best-case scenario, three and a half weeks out from purchase, which means we have to bid after that, which means that's 21 days, and then awarding the bid, et cetera, so there's some time involved. If we did that, we could get it operational sooner, put in the tanks and other facilities next year, so if they are fracking much this winter, they'd have access to water. They, we would also look at doing one fill station, filling on each side. Future location to the west would be for a second fill station, which could either be wastewater or raw water, or a combination thereof. And then the third and final map shows more of the layout of, that we'd be using an 8-inch pipeline to feed this. We'd have cap and block where the line would come to the west. We'd build a pumping building, a facility, to pump the water. Initially, we would just control it with valves, so that we could control the flow for the tank and for the fill station. The station at Dodge, we have 1,000 gallons a minute, which is about 1 million and a half gallons a day that we flow. Each location is capped at 500 gallons a minute. It takes them six or seven minutes to fill at that station. Takes them about a minute to hook, about a minute to unhook, and then they're back on the road. The location on Broadway, which is north of the water treatment plant, it takes them 12 minutes to fill. Everything's the same-sized line. It's 3-inch that they couple with, it's 3-inch that they hook to, it's the flow rate, so they're at about 12 minutes there. So total time's about 14 minutes. Missouri Basin system that they have set up, and I'm not sure where they're feeding off of, I haven't checked that out, and they can fill anywhere from 2 to 4 trucks, or 1 to 4 trucks at a time, and that's taking 20 to 30 minutes, and that's based on pressure and flow rate. So, I guess I have some more investigating to do, but needless to say, it takes longer. The sooner we can, quicker we can fill, and the more accurate we can fill. The trucks, if they're aluminum, they can haul 110 barrels. If they're steel, they can haul 130 or 150 barrels of water. 110 would be about 5,400 gallons of water. They need it for accuracy, they need to know for, it's business, and time is, time is business for them, and that's how they're billed out. At the one at Dickinson, you do the billing, it's a swipe card system, they punch a button, and that flows the water. When they punch the button again, based on the float on the back of their truck, or if they have a gauge, it'll tell them if it's full. Once they shut it off, they still get 120 gallons of water after that, so they're not getting real accurate flows. The one out, that Missouri Basin has, it'll measure barrels. There are systems out there we've looked at where you can set, like, I want 120 barrels, so that's what you would punch in, and that's what it would fill with, and it would be a lot more economical, I believe, for the industry and for all of us participating. So at this point, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, excuse me, this is kind of what we've been visiting about. I think it would be beneficial for everyone, including the state of the North Dakota, including the authority... including the authority, including the city, state water commissions on board, they would have to be a party to the agreement, because we're using their water, their facilities. You'd be operating under our water permit. We have two water permits. Our one for municipal use is 17,100 acre-feet of water. Our industrial-use permit is for 1,130 acre-feet of water. We do have an application in for an additional 8,000 acre-feet of water, and that is with the State Water Commission and Water Appropriations, and it's also with the Corps of Engineers.
Well, thank you, Ms. Massid. Any questions or comments, Mr. Kessel?
President Johnson, I'd just like to add that Ms. Massid has been very easy to work with. Appreciate her time that's invested, but I wanted to add that this project, as it's currently envisioned, is a Southwest Water project that the city would participate in. So in other words, they would own the project, they would be the construction manager, or they would hire somebody to do that process. So we would be involved, but not letting contracts and that type of thing. The other thing I wanted to mention, as she's alluded to, is one of the goals, of course, is to get these trucks out of downtown, off of Broadway as much as we can, and so we would envision that we would create some kind of a ordinance or a limit on our downtown water vendor, where it'd only make economic sense for smaller haulers, farmers, things of that nature, to fill there, but not water trucks. So I just wanted to throw those two things out. And the other percentage that has been thrown out, I think Mary said 5/7ths, it's actually 3/8ths, and that was based on construction costs for the two projects, so. But those would be the additions I'd just like to add.
I think, you know, this has potential of being a real win-win. I don't know, you know, just how much fees it would generate, you know, we've got two big projects here, you're talking $50 million, we're talking $35 million, but every dollar that we can collect here from water sales and apply towards those two projects is one less dollar our taxpayers have to, have to pay, and if, I think, if this works, which I'm fairly confident it will, I think it could be fairly significant in deferring the costs of those two projects, so.
I do, too.
I, for one, would like to see the city participate in this, and it doesn't make sense to be using treated water when the water doesn't have to be treated.
Exactly. We do have water analysis, too, for raw water and treated water. Both work very well for the oil industry, and they like our water out there. There are some companies that specify Southwest Pipeline Project water on their frac jobs, so.
Mary, have you done an analysis? Could we do both sites? Is there enough demand for the north and the south selling your raw water, and are...
The issue we've learned in the last couple of years in dealing with oil industry is they want the water. They're willing to pay for it. They are not willing to give you contracts. They are not willing to sign an agreement for 100 million gallons a year. So this is really something new and unique for us, because when we build a water system, we build it for communities who have a 40-year contract. We build it for rural customers that are going to be there, or other business and industries. In the analysis we have done, we believe this would work. As far as both projects, that's just something we've kind of been floating out there as an idea. We want to be able to think out of the box and how we can meet the need. We've also agreed not to put one close to Dickinson. Cost-wise, we don't want to do it. In our long-term plan for the authority, when we build our line, we're building a treatment plant north of Zap, seven miles. We're going to be, bring a main transmission line from that location west to north of Kildare and the Kildare Mountain area. When we build that line, we will probably build a water depot north of Kildare along Highway 22. That would be the next closest one.
Commissioner Holtman, if I may, our, to meet frac standards as they exist, as we understand them to exist, and we had our water, our treated water tested, we believe that once the new wastewater treatment plant is constructed, we'd have no problems meeting any standard that's out there in terms of fracking. What that does is provides us with about a two-year lead time in order to understand what's exactly going to happen south of the interstate in terms of drilling. I don't believe that that's a known product yet, but in two years, we'll definitely be able to tell what's going on in that area. So that would probably be the timeframe. We would be making the decision on whether or not to build a second water vendor closer to our lagoon sites. Okay.
You know, southwest North Dakota, semi-arid desert, almost, step country. The reason our project exists today is because we don't have adequate water in southwest North Dakota. So I believe, however we can work together to serve the needs of the industry, will benefit all of us. Thanks. I've got my engineer with me, Jim Lennington, with Bartlett and West. I also, actually, I have some representatives from our board, Jane Zoderman, who represents Billings County, Larry Bars, who is our chairman of the board and is one of the representatives from the city of Dickinson. If I could also just, so, thank you for attending. I would also like to make the city aware, we've had some talks and discussions, but you own the treatment plant, we will be doing some rehab work, we were scheduled to do it last winter. That didn't take place, and the project keeps growing. We're looking at probably in excess of $700,000. We'll be rehabbing the basins, we'll be doing some work on the greenleaf filters, we'll also be doing some concrete work in some of the basins, and we still need to do an extensive study as far as the life of the plant and what the future holds for them.
So, you know, I know you're probably not into this kind of detail yet, but generally speaking, when we do a new plant, do you envision it going in the same site you're at now, or would you see it at a different site?
Early on, I was really thinking a different site, but I believe the site we have will probably work.
Work, okay. There's a...
The thing about treatment is, we can't stop treating water and build a new plant.
Right. You have to operate that one until you're ready to go with the new one, so. Use the same site, is there room there where you can, in a sense, build alongside of it?
I think probably building around it and even possibly rehabbing it might be an option. We were looking at using membrane filtration, like we're doing at Zap, however, waste disposal's an issue. We won't be able to discharge the water, as you're probably aware, so.
I have one more question about the water vendor.
Okay.
I suppose it's speculation right now, but any thoughts about what you might have for traffic, how many trucks per day? Speculation, I suppose.
It is purely speculation. And they're doing, it depends on several factors. A well will take one to, you know, they'll frac in stages, depending on how many stages they do, and they're doing in excess of 30 and 40 now, 20 used to be common. It'll be anywhere from 1 million to 7 million gallons of water per frac job.
The reason I bring it up is that it would seem to me that nearly 100% of the trucks accessing the vendor will be eastbound on I-94, making that left turn at exit, what is it, 64, on the east end of town, and I think that's a tough site distance to the east. So you might want to think about that as we're contemplating this.
We've looked at sites, we've talked sites, and there's issues with every site we've looked at as far as traffic flow, but yes, we'll take that under advisement.
A lot of it depends on where the wells are located. If the wells are south of town and generally in the Highway 22 area, they're going to have to find a route to get them over to Highway 22.
Yes.
That traffic would be different.
Well, that's, you know, that's why, you know, we're looking at bypass alternatives to the west. I don't know that we have a good alternative to the east yet, and I think some of that's got to come out of that comprehensive plan. I think by the time we get to August, we're certainly going to know some initial drilling results from the south. There's some rigs working there now. Prior to the end of this year, we should have some preliminary information. But a lot of this, I think, the success of this particular site will depend upon really how much activity is to the south and, say, nearness to the west of Dickinson.
Probably, yes.
There's just a lot of unknowns there.
There is, and you're doing a lot of it without any commitment financially or on paper or otherwise. It's just, it's not there.
Well, I just think part of the decision process needs to be thinking about that
We looked south of interstate on property there, and I think that would be a much worse nightmare, so to speak, as far as getting traffic out on that highway. I'd like to see it east of interstate. I still think that's the best option, maybe. I don't know if we could do yield signs, if you could do stop signs, if maybe a traffic light, if traffic warrants. Are those possibilities?
It's all DOT jurisdictions, so.
I've talked to DOT, I've talked to county, I've, yeah. They like what we're coming up with so far.
Okay. Well, thank you for being here.
Well, thank you for taking up your time, I appreciate it.
Well, it's a good project.
Thanks. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me.
Okay, Mr. Kessel, we're back to you with your report.
Thank you, President Johnson, Commissioner. The next item is an ICMA report. ICMA, of course, stands for International City-and-County Managers Association. I just attended this conference and returned. This is the report from all of the various educational sessions that I was able to attend. It was an excellent conference. It really, you know, some of my initial impressions are the gap or the bubble within which we work economically is so much different than the rest of the nation. I was able to talk with city managers and administrators from across our nation, and to hear them be excited about a 6% unemployment weight rate when the national average is closer to 10, and you're proud of the fact that yours hovers around 1.8. And the other thing is, you know, when I would attend these in the past, most people, when you mentioned North Dakota, would know where we are on the map, but that's about it, and they know now where North Dakota is. Several of them initiated conversations about our economy, about our state surplus. It was refreshing to attend and know that more oftentimes than not, people knew about our, what's going on in North Dakota, and very envious, I think, or proud of the fact of what is happening. I'm not going to go through this individually, it's a several-page document, but I just wanted you to be aware of some of the things that I was able to attend while I was there. The next item, then, is a Board of Adjustment vacancy. We recently had a resignation from that board, and so we are looking for anybody interested to serve on our Board of Adjustments. There is information on our website at www.dickinson.gov, or dickinsongov.com. If you're interested, please look that over and fill out a citizen interest form, and we'll consider your appointment to the Board of Adjustments. And then my last item is a notice to terminate. It's a letter that was sent to Stark Development. Under our current contract, we have a 90-day notice period to change that contract, based upon the budget that was recently passed by the commission. In anticipation of that, we did send the required notice to Stark Development so that the new, the new amount can be agreed upon and put in a form of a contract. I believe you also have a draft of that contract available to you. So that would conclude my report, unless there's any questions.
Any questions or comments for the city administrator? All right, we'll go to public safety then, tab six, and here, police departments report. Captain Dossinger.
Hi, good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. I'm proud to announce to you tonight that we have been successful with our grant application for our COPS grant. COPS stands for Community Orientated Policing Services. The grant will pay the salary and benefits of two officers for three years. In the state of North Dakota, there were four agencies that have been successfully chosen with this grant. West Fargo will get two officers, Cass County, two, Dickinson, two, and Stark County, one. This grant ties in several community-oriented programs that we will be working with. One of those programs is called a CART team. I'm not sure if you guys have heard of that. A CART team exists in the eastern part of the state, but there's not one in the western part of the state. CART stands for a Child Deduction Response Team. There's no call that will rip a community apart or worse than a missing child or an abducted child. This plan will tie in several of our local agencies, forming one team to investigate and to be prepared for a call similar to a child abduction response call. So the other calls, this grant is also going to give us the ability to raise our minimum staffing to six on each shift. This will allow us to have, to always have four officers on it each time, and to be able to handle two medium-risk events simultaneously. There any questions?
The, like, when we did the 2012 budget, did we make the assumption in our budget that we would receive this grant?
We did not.
So, as I recall, then, we staggered the increase in officers throughout the year.
That's correct. Mr. Kessel, I have had some pretty healthy communications within the last couple of days regarding this issue. We would be allowed to hire two officers yet this year on this grant, one officer in January, and two in September, 2012. I don't think this grant could have came at a better time for us. It really allows us to be, to stay ahead of the game, especially what I anticipate us to face in the spring and summer of 2012.
So you'll be able to hire a total number of how many officers?
It'd be five officers.
President Johnson and Commissioner, the grant does require us to hire these two COPS officers over and above our proposed staffing, so we will have to hire the three that we originally discussed, but as Captain Dossinger mentioned, we would just do it on a different timeframe and anticipate our growth continuing to occur, so that we don't have to hire, or maybe hire fewer, in 2013 with two in September of 2012.
Well, that is good news.
Very good news.
So, anything else that you have to report on?
That's about it. The one interesting comment about regarding the truck traffic, especially the water vendors, we have been dealing with several communication talks with Burlington Northern, San Jose, regarding the tanker trailers and the crossing issues that have resulted from that. We are working with them to help alleviate some of those issues before we have a tanker struck by a train.
That wouldn't be a good deal.
It wouldn't be, and a matter of fact, they are sending officials out here next month, and they are going to allow some officers to ride on a train and come up with some enforcement ideas and try to help enforce the traffic rate crossing violations.
Any, the commissioners have any comments or questions for Captain Dossinger?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Then we go to Public Works, and I think the only item we had left there were the reports from the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. Was there anything you two wanted to highlight from that?
Mr. President, Commissioner, it's for information purposes. It wasn't put in your last packet from last meeting, which would have been more pertinent, because some of those items came in front of you last meeting, but at least you have the minutes from the latest planning, funding, and zoning commission.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson.
I might be digressing a little bit here. You know, when we do get to see the September minutes, I think it'll be important that you see how Target was greeted by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Even though the crew camp location was turned down, it was made very clear to the Target people that we need them in this community, that we welcome them in this community. They left the meeting... They left the meeting, and, and this would all be on tape, you'd be able to see it on television. They left the meeting and came back after the regular agenda was completed, and we again reinforced the fact that we would help them find a site if we could, if that's appropriate, that we want them in the community, that we need their kind of facility as part of this formula for housing that we're, that we're going after. So, I hope we'll see that in the minutes, and, and Mr. Kurta, I think I'm describing that correctly?
I, I would concur with it. I, you know, the Planning Commission made a recommendation, what you felt comfortable with, but throughout the comments from, from all the commissioners, they all stated that this isn't necessary, that we need to have crew camp facility in the city, it was just a location issue. It had nothing to do with the operation or the facility itself, it just had to do with the location, and that's why the Planning Commission has recommended to deny.
Anything else? Then we'll go to Tab 7, the City Commission, and Commissioner Steiner has an issue he would like to comment on. Commissioner Steiner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. One of the issues I wanted to bring about is, is bringing this issue to the forefront of parking on the public streets. I, I think we received complaints this year of travel trailers, motorhomes, and so on parked on the public streets. I know I had complaints filed with me, and I know that the police department has checked into the complaints, all, and so on. But what I'm seeing here is, with the current ordinance, I don't think we're giving the police department enough teeth to enforce this, this ordinance. I did go down, actually, if you drive around town, you will see this quite a bit now, and my concern is, that these large travel trailers, or small travel trailers, whatever they are, parked on the city streets with their slide outs open, thus, you know, impairing the sidewalk, going out into the street, electrical hookups across the public sidewalk, and in some cases, covering safety signs and speed limit signs on, on our public streets. I, I think, you know, we're going to see more and more of this, and in some way, we're going to see this winter. I believe we had issues last year with a 40-foot motorhome on the city street where the city plows it to plow around it three, four times, and then the person was ticketed, but he just didn't move it until we actually threatened to move it ourselves. But the point being here is that we have to give the police department something with some more teeth in it. I think we need to review the ordinance, I don't think the three-day and then moving it is working, because according to that, if you move it one inch, you're fined for another three days. I don't know what the answer is, but I think we do have to review it. Because it's just going to get worse this winter, and the next summer, it's going to be a bigger problem yet. Some of them have travel trailers parked one side of the street and directly across the other side of the street. There's no way a fire department or a fire truck would get through that. Okay? I did take some photos of, of one that basically encapsulated all the problems that I went through here, with just the one way, just the way he was parking, with the slide outs out, the huge electric cord coming across and covering a sign, and the slide outs into the street again. So I, I think we do need to review that with Captain Dossinger and his staff, and see what we can do to enforce it. It comes down to where we absolutely have to start issuing tickets to take care of this problem. And I don't know what the answer is after that. It'd be interesting to hear what you guys think of this.
Thank you, Commissioner Steiner. Any, any reaction by fellow commissioners here?
Well, generally, I agree. I think for the family that might park a boat or a camper on the street during the summertime a little bit, I think we have to use some common sense. But the situations you're describing, it's really part of our housing issue. It's really one segment of our housing issue.
And that's why we're going to see more of it.
And we talk about what's going to make us look like a boomtown in a negative sense. That's one example. So generally, I agree.
Mr. Kessel or Mr. Coleen, perhaps you could contact Williston and see if they've addressed this issue at all. They've, they've had to have experienced this well before we did, and, and I would think to a much greater extent than we have, and, and see if they've really addressed it. It might be interesting, if they have, at least look at, at their ordinance and see how that compares to what we presently have.
Certainly, President Johnson, I can call Williston and/or Watford City. I'm sure they would be in the same boat.
Right. But there would be a place we could start, so. Thank you.
Mr. President, there is one quick, another issue I'd like to address here.
Sure, my.
And see where we're at on this. 15th Street West, with the construction that are going on now, what is our intention to make that no on-street parking, since there's an emergency route? And if so, I think we need to get signage up now, so the people that are building those homes know what it's going to happen, and the people that are also thinking about buying along 15th know what type of parking to be available.
President Johnson, Commissioner Steiner, I don't believe we had any intentions to have no parking on 15th Street. It certainly was built wide enough with parking lanes on both sides of the street.
That's one of the worst roads in the winter, when we have storms and so on. You know, it's just a concern, I don't know if we want to allow on-street parking on that emergency route. You know, obviously something for the entire board to think about, but if you drive along there, and you can just picture it, parking on both sides is a safety issue for a lot of people on that street, and I, I don't know if that's something we want to allow. I'd invite the commissioners to drive on that street a few times in the next couple weeks, and see what your thoughts are.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Steiner. Any other comments by city commissioners? Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? If so, come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. There's no one from the public. Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn.
And make that motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion.